Okay, good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session for July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. If you would please stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father God be thanking and praising you again for this day. We thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for how you continue to bless this school system, continue to lead us, continue to guide us, keep our students safe during this, uh, the spring, summer break, and then Lord bless our staff that they'll continue to show them self-worthy. Bless them that they'll continue to give all they can to help our kids to be successful. These blessings we ask in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three, citizens address the board. No one signed in. Okay, number four is approval of the work session agenda. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Mr. McIver, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries, five zero. All right, Dr. Williams?
All right, so under student success, um, Skills USA had their national competition. June the twenty eighth, twenty-fourth through twenty-eighth in Atlanta, they had five students compete. Um, Luke Todd got eleventh overall in marine service technology. Um, Alicia Joseph, Gage Medlock, Sidney Rush placed seventh with a career showcase. And they presented their project where they recycled old shrimp net, buy-catch devices, and turned them into tabletop Christmas trees. I don't know if y'all saw that at Christmas, I did, I think posted some of those.
Oh, those are cool.
Um, Adric Wickenhagen placed fifth in motorcycle service technology. All the students were representing commercial fisheries pathway except for Adric Wickenhagen who is representing automotive service pathway. He attends, um, GICCA. But he participates in our Skills USA. So, Miss Kathleen's going to do an article on the students in national. June twenty eighth through twenty, oh, twenty-fourth through twenty-eighth. I can send you my notes later if you need me to. Um, end of year data reviews, we, um, each quarter, the team here goes out and does quarterly data reviews with each school leadership team. So at the end of the year, we had all of them come together and present so that across the system, we could see if there were patterns or trends, and we could all be working on the same things together. So, um, our literacy initiatives are going, literacy initiatives are going well. Our parental involvement and engagement in activities has increased. We talked about what populations, grade levels, and locations in a school were most likely for discipline incidents, which was some of it was isolating, some of it was a little bit weird, like we didn't expect it of that population or that group. Um, we talked about bus referrals and how we can help our bus drivers with some PPIS training and just training the students on what the expectations are for the buses at the beginning of the year. Uh, math and science, we need to focus on a little bit at certain grade levels, and then we talked about going back to the UBD, our backward design framework for lesson planning and helping all our teachers understand what that is. So, just one of those things, we all came together. It was a really good session, probably one of the best sessions we'd had with everybody here. Um, and then Mr. McNair, you want to talk about your federal programs presentation that you and Miss Loewit did?
Yeah, I can, um, just briefly talk about that. We, um, went to present, um, for our federal programs conference, and we were on a panel with, um, two other school districts from around the state that had, um, basically gotten removed from the disproportionality list. There are school systems in this state, um, various sizes that have been on the, um, disproportionality list for, uh, over identification of students with EBD, that type of thing, for over ten years. And, um, a lot of that has to do with the process that they're going through, so we had an opportunity to share our process with them. And despite the COVID, um, situation that was occurring during the time that we got notified that we were disproportionate, we actually put things in place to really address our over identification, and that had to do more with looking at the schools, their discipline processes, what they were doing when it came to RTI, and then going through the process with the audience there about what tools we used, working with the principals to collect the data and monitor it over two years. So within a three-year period, um, well, two and a half years, we actually were removed from the disproportionality. That helped us tremendously because if you guys recall, I was having to set aside about fifteen percent of my budget, which was about sixty thousand dollars, just to address that, which meant sixty thousand dollars had to come from you guys to make up the difference. So that was a monumental milestone for us, and, uh, they wanted to pay, uh, give us some attention or less for the, uh, job that we had did. So it wasn't anything that I did, I kind of provided the leadership, but it was definitely the principals at the school and the teachers and staff working to help us get off that list. And, um, it was just remarkable, and had a lot of people come to me and ask me what tools we were using. I talked to them about that, didn't make any commercial advertisers.
Maybe you should have.
Here's the thing that I, I did share with them before I told them, I said, "Look, there's no easy way to get off that list. It requires a work and a commitment," and we had that from our principals and our teachers, especially at the elementary school where we were actually being identified. We're actually having, um, uh, Dr. Baker come in again to provide additional support for our teachers, especially with our new teachers coming in. There's kits that they receive for that particular, um, program. And so they'll have an opportunity to learn how to use it early on before problems occur later. So, again, just one of those great things that we had an opportunity to share with everybody around the state about that came to our particular session. And, uh, we were very happy that the funds that we were having to allocate are coming back into our budget again. So, um, that, that was what we did. The conference was fantastic, a lot of good sessions, we learned a lot, uh, things that we'll be able to bring back and implement in the school. The biggest push, uh, is with the literacy, um, definitely working with our kids with K twelve, K three, or K five in our case with dyslexia, but really focusing on that literacy piece. ELA standards are being implemented and, uh, kind, um, brought up this year, so it's going to really affect how we approach the instruction moving forward this year and the years following. So I'm excited, we got a lot of good things happening in this district, and, uh, we're looking forward to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I like that casual look there, Mr. McNair.
Twenty-five minutes ago, I dropped all my clothes off.
He just got back from vacation too.
Oh, okay. Just to be here.
I did not tell him he had to show up, okay.
Yeah, okay, Elsie. Oh goodness.
All right, um, under B, our goal area two, organizational effectiveness. We have our, um, minutes from our previous meetings, if you will look over those, let Ms. Lane or Dr. Williams know if you see any problems. And now we'll go to Ms. Tammy with our financial reports.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On page two. General operating account, we began the month with two point seven eight million. We had receipts of one point seven eight million and dispersments of one point six, leaving us with a balance of two point nine million in the general operating account. General fund revenues and expenses, so through, through June, I have most everything in, we'll still have things trickling in up until I close the books at the end of August. Uh, but for revenues, we've received nineteen point two million, which is actually over our budgeted amount of eighteen, next page. Uh, our budgeted amount of eighteen point two million, we're at a hundred and five percent of our budgeted revenues.
Was that extra tax money we collected?
A lot of it, it was a tax money. Uh, expenditures, page thirty-one, we've come in at seventeen point one million in total general fund expenditures, which is ninety-one point eight percent of our budgeted eighteen point seven, so expenditures were coming in under. Like I said, I've got my major salary accruals in, but there will be some end of the month June expenditures coming in. Uh, that last column there, we do, at June thirtieth, we still have sixty-nine thousand in open purchase orders, so we're working on getting invoices to get those cleaned up. Okay, changes in fund equity, page thirty-six. So I am anticipating more expenditures coming in, but right now, um, as of June thirtieth, um, we've got a fund balance of just over six million. If you remember in budget, I think I projected about five point eight, so we may be a little bit more than projection by the time everything gets done. School nutrition, page one thirty-four. School nutrition account, three hundred, beginning month with three hundred and forty-nine thousand, revenues of a hundred and twelve thousand, expenditures of ninety-five thousand, leaving three hundred and sixty-six thousand in the school nutrition account. School nutrition fund balance at June thirtieth, page one forty-two, is two hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Local projects, page one forty-six. Current balance in, in our local projects is eight hundred and ninety thousand. We do still have some open purchase orders for some projects, uh, that'll come out of the, uh, local projects account. Money market account, four point one million. Debt service account. Uh, these lost receipts for the month were a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, still on an increase, had, which is eight, eight point eight percent above the collections for the same month last year, so we're still on that upward trend, uh, with an ending balance of four point four six million in the, uh, in the debt service account. Are there any questions over to that?
I don't have any.
I don't. Y'all good down there?
I'm good.
We're good.
Okay, item number three is our policy, our retention promotion, um.
Mr. McNair, you want to talk about three and four? One is a regulation, so we just need to tell you about it, it doesn't have to be voted on. The other one is to be placed on the table for thirty-day review.
Regulation for the opt-out retention promotions, uh, came about, um, as a result of some of our parents requesting that their students not participate in the GMAS. And the state has, it's, it's in our state regulations, rules, that there is no opt-out provision. And so what we did, we had to look at the rules that they were u- utilizing around the state, specifically in our district, and decide what would be the best option for us. So we looked at several dis- school districts, we looked at some of the things that they were putting in their opt-out promotion, um, policy, and we decided to make some changes. So that, our policy has been updated with the GMA's review. We were very successful, um, during this past school year for the GMAS because I had about six parents who wanted their kids not to take the test. And, um, the state doesn't look very favorably on that when school systems don't have at least a hundred percent participation. Uh, we've been close to a hundred percent every single year, including those kids that are on hospital homebound and that alternate, alternative school also, so had a chance to meet with each of those parents individually and convince them that their students needed to take the test. We only had one student that did not take the test, but when he returns, part of the negotiation with the parent was that we would contact the state and provide the assessment for him at that time. This student has, uh, sickle cell and was going through a bone marrow transplant. So he was unable to be physically in our school system or in school at all, so we got like a little waiver from the state which would count as a, a non-participation, but soon as he comes in, they'll take that mark off, so that's going to work in our favor also, so.
So, Mr. McNair, what were the, what were the oppositions?
Part of it is just what parents here in, in the community, our kids, they can't make our kids take the test, and, um, yeah, I don't know why they make them test. It was really this base, basic test opposition more than anything. Well, you know, because a lot of the kids, some of the kids that I was, I'm speaking of, were not doing well in school academically. So the parents did feel like it was necessary for them to test to show that they were not doing well, and so.
And that we might use that test for a promotion or retention.
We might use it for promotion or retention. The great thing about the way the rule is, is that even if the parent opts out and we send a letter, and then they decide, we have, they have to come in for a meeting, and that means a committee of teachers, administrators, and everybody will sit down and make a decision whether that student will be promoted or retained. Well, a lot of the parents towards the end of the school year don't want to go through that process. And, and so we had, like I said, more parents willing to go ahead and let their children take the test. Um, of the ones that opted out that ended up taking the test, their performance was pretty, I guess, similar to what we had saw on their, uh, MAP scores. So, one of the things I explained to parents is that we use the data to inform instruction. So if we know that you're having problems with reading comprehension or, um, literacy on some level, we use that information to help with the instruction for that. So after explaining that to most of the parents, they understood why we needed to collect the data to see exactly where the strengths were and the weaknesses to help the kids, so.
This is a movement right now in the state of people not wanting their kids to take the state test. I don't know where it's coming from, but it's not just us.
It's, it's some of it's social, some of it's political, it's just a combination of both, and, um, I even had one parent tell me that she belongs to a group of parents. There's about a hundred kids from various districts around here, and they were all op- opposing, uh, opting out of the test. So I, I was just really amazed that there was that many parents in our region that were, um, involved in that process, so.
Everybody loves drama.
Yep. And then we looked at our, um, I guess out-of-district.
Room residents, yeah.
Students that wanted to come in, and we made sure that the criteria that we set up were students who could come in our district, make a contribution, and be successful. And there were guidelines which meant if we accepted them, and it requires superintendent approval, of course, that that student had to maintain satisfactory academic and behavioral and attendance year to year, which meant they had to apply every year. So you may be admitted into our school system one year, come in, start having problems or whatever, and we have that option, which is explained in the policy that you will not be re-enrolled. So, so again, if you're a good student, you can contribute to the school system and to your suc- their individual success, we definitely want them in. But you guys will get a chance to look at the policy, and if we need to make some changes for it, we will at that time. But that was one of the things that I worked on before we actually took off. Definitely take a look at it. Any questions about the opt-out provision or the out-of-district enrollment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then numbers five, six, seven, and eight are the ones that have been on a thirty-day review. So, just a reminder, GBRI was, um, due to house spend, house bill ten-ten that changed the number of hours. Um, GBRK changed the number of vacation days that an employee could, um, max. IFCB was field trips and excursions, and it changed it where you guys only approve out-of-state overnight. And then JBC four was, we replaced it with a DOE policy. Just to make it flow with what DOE says. Just a reminder about what those are.
And we wrote on these Thursday night.
Some other policies, just to mention, um, Title IX will need to be revised, but I think it's now twenty-something states have filed suit against the federal state, uh, federal Department of Education. I can't think of my word I'm looking for. The, they filed suit against them because they don't agree with the new regulations, so we're just going to wait and see how that plays out. Okay. And I knew the DOE would come up with something and they'll send it down to us, so we're kind of just waiting. There's no sense in us revising it and then have to revise it again. Same thing with our acceptable use policy. Um, Rusty's got a lot to think about between now and next school year, but we decided to just wait because the new law doesn't go into effect until next school year, so we don't need to change it now and then have to change it again. So we're just gonna change it all next summer, so.
All right, and then number nine, discussion of our strategic plan.
Mm-hmm, the strategic plan is posted. Did I put it? No, I didn't put it here, but it's on, can they get to it?
I can, um, please.
Okay. Okay, all right, so we had our, um, strategic plan meeting June the nineteenth, that's down under community involvement. Um, just a couple of, we didn't change the vision at all, we just changed the wording, it's still the same for the mission, we just changed the way it was worded. For the beliefs, we changed a word instead of schools. I don't know what the word was. Anyway, we changed it to learning environment to include buses, and then we added that education is a lifelong learning journey. That was the only big changes. We kept all the same, um, buckets, our goal areas, and we kept all the same initiatives. So we had a really good meeting that day, um, it went really well, so you're going to open that up so they can see it, or you, do I just need to post our, I can post it, the PDF of it. But if y'all will look over that before Thursday night and any feedback you have for that. I know a couple of you were at the meeting, so.
And we'll need to vote to approve it, so if y'all get a chance to look at it before Thursday, because I have to send GSBA the date of approval of our, of the one. And I've got to do that by the end of the month.
We're going to reword it. I went through that today.
If you can go like, just, um, Rusty, where it is. Well, and I was just gonna, um, I think everybody here knows how to get to it, but just in case, just to, um, show them how to click at the top. Okay, but they can see where the old one is, like take them through the steps to get to the old one. Okay. Just click on evaluations, and maybe I'll do it without being logged in. Planning, planning, sorry, go to the planning. But you should see, be able to see the old ones because the community should be able to see it. So all you'll do is on the top of, um, simply just click on that planning.
And I can send you, I can send it in PDF if that's easier, because I've got it downloaded as a PDF.
Shut your face. That's the password, shut your face.
But I wanted them to see where they can see all the, yeah.
Okay, so go back to planning.
So we'll see both now.
And then you'll see the one that we're working with, which is.
No, it's still showing you not logged in.
It went through.
That's fine.
I was trying to get everything out, I forgot.
No, it's fine.
Don't trust the device.
I've been putting the password in every time I logged into this thing, and she told me that, she goes, "If you click that, you don't have to do it," I said, "Oh."
Yeah.
So if you guys get logged in, it should show the new one with the end date of twenty twenty-nine.
And then, um, I'm telling Dr. Williams, it's much better now because we can actually print it out, like if it was a part of the agenda, because I remember we was breaking my try, print out the whole one, and it was a.
It was.
Go to items, click on items right here. There you go.
And then you'll notice that some of the, um, action steps have, um, little codes by them, and up to the top, the legend tells you what the code.
And we're going to go back, because.
Hey, I'm glad to see the green.
Yeah, and some of those need to be ongoing because we're continually doing it, so.
And I was just playing around with that, I had, um, I told Dr. Williams, I got trained a couple.
Elsie's worked hard on this.
So I've been working hard, but some of the stuff I'm just kind of learning about it, so.
Thank you.
So I will send that, I will make sure y'all get that. All right, and then the next one is discussion of a mobile robot. Coach Warren, that would be you.
R two D two.
It kind of is like an R two D two.
So, when, we have a, in our county, like other counties, we have facilities, right? And part of that facility is putting natural surface down, so you got the grass, we'll put the paint surface on. So the board of education in the school system buys the paint that we use to put on the surface. Currently, we buy about a hundred cases of paint a year, aerosol cans. Uh, that price is about seventy, going to be seventy-two hundred dollars approximately for this upcoming year, it goes up. We have the equipment that would be the equivalency of the guy that marks the lines, that before you dig. It's very tight and sandy, it's very old, it's getting very expensive. Our reg department uses a, um, a combustible motorized compression painter. We, I, I, and, and some of my coaches, we looked at upgrading our paint program. That's what we looked at. We looked at turf tank, we looked at side gears, we looked at tiny mobile robots, which is the one that, uh, we're looking at now. The tiny mobile robot came and painted our practice field in twenty-seven minutes.
Wow.
Right, and we decided to race it today in time, my whole staff, our tenants, took us an hour and forty-two minutes to paint. It cost us to paint the practice field ninety dollars. It cost us to paint for the robot. It cost us, uh, today six hundred dollars to paint the practice field roughly with, with existing paint that we had that. Uh, plus it's hot, I'm getting old. All right, so the tiny mobile, mobile robot, if we did a payment plan, it was about six thousand dollars each bumper to bumper. If you purchased it at one time, uh, like this, um, Tammy was asking us to do, that purchased it at one time, it would save the board, uh, about two thousand dollars a year over the next six years, so twelve thousand dollars over two years, over six years, two thousand dollars a year. At the end of six years, this thing's covered bumper to bumper, I want you to picture this. It looks like, you guys remember the push lawnmowers that had the big wheel in the back?
Mm-hmm.
Now take the handlebars off of it, put a two-gallon jug in it, two-and-a-half-gallon jug in it, and take an iPad, and go start paint field. It goes off cellular data, existing maps, and things like that. After the end of six years, which would, would net twelve, twelve thousand dollars, it go, the price goes to seventeen hundred dollars. So it goes way down after six, after six years, so you're saving quite a bit of money, quite a bit of time, and instead of looking like a dash man or a crooked lion if you ever seen on a football field or soccer field, this thing makes it look like it's a trophy, and paints it amazing. Storing one hundred cases of paint is, is rough, uh, it gets hot and explodes. We would store, go from a whole entire storage closet, you know, to a little area about about like this. With the paint that we would add to it. I think it's called, I didn't figure out soccer field, or softball, I put it in, in baseball league, but the football cost would go down from about a hundred cases to, I'm sorry, fifty cases, uh, which is about thirty-five hundred dollars down to about eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars.
So it uses that much less paint?
It uses, it's not an aerosol, it's like you pour out Sherwin-Williams paint or something.
Okay.
So you put it in a two-and-a-half-gallon jug, you set the density of the paint to make it look nice, to, to lighten it up, or however you. So you put it in a two and a half gallon jug, you set the density of the paint to make it look nice, to, to lighten it up, however, the density is slower to go.
Sure.
So you set that, that paint up, and then it takes about two and a half to five gallons to paint a game field, we'll paint an entire game field in three hours, it takes us about eight, six, eight, uh, roughly, then on, a bell, of course, with the logos. Things like that, so you literally paint it, you get done painting, you take your jug out, screw the top on it, set it down, put a, a jug of water in it, uh, instead of paint, make it clean, and sprays that out till it goes clear. Take the jug of water out, you take the nozzle off, it's about like taking a cap off of a three, a two liter Coca-Cola bottle, and wash it out and put it back on, and you take the battery out, it looks like a shoebox, with a pin shoebox. And you set it on the shelf and you plug it in, and you're done.
Now will it do a logo as well?
It will do, so imagine a stencil, uh, where you stencil it out, and then you fill in the colors.
Okay.
It will stencil it out, so for us, it will paint the middle school field, football field, soccer, and, and football, to my knowledge. Paint the high school field, soccer, and football, it'll paint the baseball field, it'll paint the softball field, it'll do block letters, and it will do one logo stencil if we choose to, to do so. That's, that's, what we've been looking at, it's nicer, it's easier, um, you can't walk as fast as that thing paints. Well, I tried to do my mall walk, and it was, I couldn't keep up with it. So anyway, that's a little bit about it, what we're looking at doing, um, I appreciate you helping.
So, painting it, so painting the football field, took how many, how much paint now?
Um, with or without logo?
Without.
Six to eight cases.
Per game? So when he brought this to me.
I, I thought that was, I was adding it up here, I was like.
Thought he heard wrong.
Man, maybe, maybe I heard the wrong numbers there.
Paint the logo, you're looking at twelve to fifteen.
So when we first looked at it and paying the rental for six years, it was gonna be the same as what we were paying for paint? But then Tammy said she doesn't like to do six-year leases, she just wants to buy it straight out.
Right.
So.
So this price includes the paint that you would need for as long as you own it?
Buy the paint, uh, the board would actually purchase the robot, it'd be part of our facility, the paint fit, and that's why it's part of it.
Pick up the paint.
How much is, would the paint be?
Uh, it's a hundred and eighty dollars for two, like today's cost is about ninety dollars, so we, it was out, two and a half, I put some water in the jug, and finished like the last ten feet, we used about two and a half gallons on the practice field.
Cause you got your big camp tomorrow.
We do, that's our camp tomorrow, it's the biggest camp I've ever ran, Coach, we're expecting six hundred fifty, eight hundred cameras.
Wow.
I'm really nervous.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are you using the barrels at camp? Do you need them there in the morning?
No, sir.
Oh, okay.
And where the camp's gonna be, just at the school facility, or is it gonna be able to flow at the leisure services, or?
No, we're not gonna use overflow, we're gonna use, uh, invite the two practice fields up in the halves, so it's like having four fields, and so we play, there'll be eight high schools on the two fields at one time, and they'll play fifteen minutes, you know, six fifteen minutes of rest, and a new eight to come on and play fifteen minutes, we're gonna do a free time, a free time at the park.
We're not using the paint field. At all.
We'll be only at an hour, I guess that's alright, let it grow a little bit more.
I couldn't get any more concessions, we're, we're making money concessions. I couldn't get any more concessions in my truck today, I was bad, otherwise I'd have won the conference.
You might just run it out, right?
It was, it was going.
You might have to send somebody to get some in the, in the middle of the day tomorrow.
We might, we, uh, we bought, uh, I don't know much work, but we bought, and we pre-sold so much of it, like, for, so, each team will get, if they bought, they got two hot dogs, a twenty ounce, a, 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 a bag of chips. And I think we cleared fifteen hundred on pre-sold.
Hey, Rick Caldwell and I, the most we ever did without a concession, was at a trapping meet one time. God, we, them children were hungry.
Alright, discussion of our MOU with Coastal Plains High School, um, this is just our annual renewal, if we approve it on Thursday night, and Ms. Bregman will sign it, I can get that to them. Um, we got a surprise that we didn't know we were getting, Mr. Moss has sent me a note and said, did you know we were getting a check from them, and I did not, and they sent us seventy-five thousand dollars for using our facility for the year, so. We were happy to get some extra.
Coastal Plains?
Extra money we didn't know we were getting. Um, discussion of the SRO contract, I think everybody, I think we've all talked about that, um, I did get the updated, we took out a few things, Richie and I went through it, added a, a couple of, he wanted a couple of sentences that note, Sheriff wanted a couple of sentences taken out, um, I added a couple of things in. Um, it was a forty thousand dollar increase for the contract, and then they also increased the off-duty officers that we hired for games. That went from twenty-five an hour to thirty-two an hour. So, I already told Rucker we might not need as many officers.
I'm just glad they didn't hear about the seventy-five thousand before we got the, the new price.
Well, I was gonna say, you pumped us up on that seventy-five thousand, and then, there it goes.
This was a nice surprise, huh?
It was a nice surprise.
It was, I think Dr. Williams and I heard about it, basically, I think it'd been several years since it had increased, the, the county had given some raises to the deputies to include the SRO, so it made sense, I mean, it, it, not, not something you wanna swallow, but it did make sense.
Well, this last contract, wasn't this, didn't we pay the same for like three years?
I think it was.
Okay. Four years.
Four years.
So is this gonna be?
No, this is one.
This is just one year until the new sheriff comes in?
Yeah, Dr. Williams, I think of course.
He, and he, he didn't wanna do it for more than one year, and I, I agree, 'cause he's not gonna be the sheriff, so.
Right.
That's right.
He said that needs to be somebody else's deal next year, so.
Maybe we can pump the next one to lower it down.
Hey, we can try.
We can try, that's right. Alright, so that's all I had for that.
Alright, just a little.
Mr. Mossa, facilities? And COVID?
I don't have COVID, I'm just coughing. She said COVID, I said I'm just coughing.
No, he just has to do, we have to keep doing these updates until we quit reporting about the COVID money, so.
That's right.
Alright, great evening, Board, it's a pleasure to stand before you this evening. Um, I wanna start off with a initiative of school safety, we're always taking that into account, and at a, at our, oh, home games, we've decided that we're gonna go with clear bags for everybody that comes to the home game, so, um, Dr. Williams is gonna start posting it online and, um, letting everybody know that there, um, is one of the things you have to do to come into the game, is have a clear bag, we'll have these signs posted at the ticket booths. Um, there are some provisions that if you have a diaper bag and a medical bag, you can bring those, but they'll be checked out. You know, we have a bunch of officers, and it slows things down, we have to check every bag, if they'll be able to visually look their, look at them and, um, just see what's going on there, a- as you know, the, we've seen events with safety and events are, is even more in our minds now, so this is, um, works out perfectly, I think that, um, it's going to, just be another factor that says, McIntosh County, we're, we're doing everything we can to be safe. So again, these will be posted at the games, we're gonna put two of them on a stand, we don't really wanna put this on the building, so when the basketball games are coming into the building, we can just put them out and know as they walk through the door, but permanently posted on the, um, entrances of the field of the, of high school, so. That, I think that's, um, a good safety precaution.
Are they gonna be out near the gate, so whenever they drive up, they don't have to get to the, the ticket booth? And then they have a bag that's not clear, and then they go, have to, you know, go back to their car?
It's possible that we have two that are on stands, we can, um, put them out. I think that we're just gonna get the word out, and after the first game, it'll be out there, it's not gonna be a too, too big of a problem.
And we'd already kinda started this, so they're kinda used to it in basket.
Yeah, it is.
All the Savannah schools do it.
I'm really excited about the progress on the Oak Grove building, we've come a long ways, all of the hallways have been painted. Um, I just cannot believe how much stuff that maintenance took out of there, we had storage in there for many, many years, that since it's been not used, and, um, every single classroom except for two have been cleared out, and two just have, are just a few things left, easy to clear out. The tile has been ordered, it's there, we have it in the shop, we're waiting on the high school carpet to be completed, the, the carpet's gonna be replaced in the media center at the high school, and the same gentleman that's doing that job is also doing the job at Oak Grove, so he, we have him focused on that high school before, um, school starts, and then he'll move over to Oak Grove, and that building will be, at that point, um, pretty close to ready. I'm really super excited about the, uh, walkway and a big giant deck, um, concrete slab that was poured out in front of the side that the Girls and Boys Club has, that way that it's tracking in so much less dirt, and it gives it the potential to have a little awning coming off of that, it, the, um, parking area's gonna be off to the left, they've got a great plan, and this was all, um, paid for by Girls and Boys and Girls Club. They received a grant, um, with some safety funds in there, so, and that was part of it, so they've got the concrete, we've got a plan for a little parking spot, and really beautify that, and then we're meeting next, um, this week to talk with them about, um, a partnership moving forward, some things that they can do for us, and maybe that we could possibly do for them to, um, continue building that Girls and Boys Club up, we're really excited about that. It looks really good, and, um, I think that it's adding to our value for sure. And then, the bathroom, the bathroom is, and I've been wanting to tell you this for so long, that it's finished. Last step, they're building, they're pouring the concrete that goes down at an angle so that it's, um, wheelchair accessible. The toilets are in there, everything's in there, it's looking really good, few final touches, um, when the concrete's done, we'll, uh, I don't know if we wanna have a grand unveiling of the bathroom.
We can't sit in there.
Yeah, we can, we can always have a bus party.
As long as it's taken a moment, it, it's really, really nice, uh, the stripe is, that goes across really matches, and, and I think it completes our athletic complex at the middle school, and we have something, uh, that's, I'm proud of, and I think anybody that comes in there is gonna be proud of. Um, Coach Warren did a great job organizing those lockers we got, we have a great locker room in there. We're gonna continue working on the visitor's side locker room, um, do a few more adjustments to that, great bathroom, um, our press box is, is off the chain. Brand new sound system coming, so there's, their, um, middle school athletic complex is, I think, one, one of the nicest, so.
Old fill house is now fully functional, laundry, living room, restroom is just fully functional.
Really nice, and you add that to a, a really great weight room for a middle school, we have really set our students up in, in a big way, in my opinion. And so, without, I saved the very best for last, and this is an award to our Board of Education because of your leadership and, um, allowing us to do the things we, we do. This is a Ward of Excellence presented by the Georgia Education Workman's Compensation for McIntosh County DOE in recognition for an outstanding safety year. We had, um, Workman's Comp gentleman come around, walk through every building, he's done that twice. Uh, all of our inspections, along with, um, Rusty's cybersecurity, everything that goes into it, that, uh, they're recognizing that McIntosh County has stepped up to the plate, and, and we are excellent in this area. And again, I contributed to it, all starts at the top with our leaders right here, so thank you for the support that you provided all of us, and helping us do our job, and this recognition goes to you. So I present it to our board chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Give it a big round of applause. Now, COVID is, you know, in our minds, and, and people are forgetting about it, it's slipping away, but we're not, we're still kinda monitoring, and we have our protocols in place. And again, this gives me an opportunity just to bring up general health, safety, um, provisions that we need to do, continue washing your hands, I would say this to everybody, and, um, if you're sick, stay home, and fever-free for twenty-four hours without medication is what has driven into my head, so that, that's, um, a, a critical telltale sign, that if you're fever-free twenty-four hours without medication, you're okay to come, but if not, we would rather you not get, uh, everybody else sick. Any questions?
I think you, Coach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mossa.
Yes, sir.
Alright, you will notice that we also reversed community engagement and quality workforce, just to make it flow better at meetings, so we can cover everything before we go into executive session, so we're just gonna renumber those on our strategic plan. So for community engagement, with McIntosh Groves, um, for the twenty-three, twenty-four year, they did two seminars at the high school. They did a tour for the hospitality and tourism pathway students, they did some things with the middle school, not as much with the middle school, and then they had several guest readers at Todd Grant. So we just had a meeting, not last week, the week before that, that, this committee, so they're gonna continue the reading guests at Todd Grant, they wanna do two a month, is the goal. They would also like to assist more with the trunk-or-treat event, and help get that out to local businesses, which I told them that would be great. Um, at McIntosh Middle, they wanna bring in some guest speakers, they're assisting with our junior achievement activities, and then the, we have a possibility of maybe launching a civics bee, which is kinda like a spelling bee, but in social studies, and they do that through the US Chamber, so Kat has listened to a webinar and got a lot of information, and we're gonna, we don't have to do anything till, I think, after Christmas. And then at MCA, they wanna do some presentations, they've decided that sophomores are the year to hit, so they're doing finance, conservation, tourism, manufacturing, and logistics. They wanna launch a junior chamber leadership program with juniors and seniors, and then they wanna do a scholarship mentor day and have a workshop where seniors can come and get help with their scholarships. Which I thought was a great idea. Uh, for family connection, uh, Ms. Genovese resigned as our director due to health reasons, um, we have a new board. Um, Sandy and I are both on that board, we had a meeting, Jackie Mall is our chairperson, and we are in the process of searching for a new director at this time. Our grant has been approved, but now we gotta find a director. Um, and then strategic planning, um, first I wanna thank Ms. Noble, 'cause she put that whole day together and did an excellent job with it. Um, thank you to our community members that came and participated and provided input, our school leaders, we have teachers here, and then our district office staff, thank y'all, because y'all did all the presenting that day. Ms. Noble told me I didn't have to work, y'all did, so I appreciate it. She said, no, Dr. Williams, they're gonna do it, I said, okay. So that's it.
Alright, and then we'll discuss personnel, yes, in executive session?
We have personnel, we have legal.
And cybersecurity.
And cybersecurity.
Okay, could I have a motion to go to executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McIver, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. McDonald, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero, we will return. Yeah. Okay, the board had adjourned to executive session to discuss cybersecurity, legal, and personnel. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hewlett, second? Second by Mr. Stravels, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. Alright, any board comments?
I'll wait until next week when the camera's here.
Wait for the camera.
I'm good.
Everybody? Alright, we're adjourned.